The format of this evening will be to hear the WPCA budget, then followed by questions, our comments. Then we'll hear the first selectmen's budget, followed by questions or comments. And then we will hear the superintendent of schools budget, followed by questions and comments. If you do have a question or a comment, we're asking that you please come up to stand at the podium and state your name and what your question and/or comment is. At this time, I would like to introduce my board of finance. Aaron Kachoffer is our secretary. The first gentleman is Steve Garrick. He is an alternate. The next gentleman is Brian Bagley. Then we have Comrade Ula, which is an alternate. We have Adrian Moriarty, Tony Pellegrino, and David Walsh. And I'm Jane Slater, the chairman. At this time, I would like to present Mary Midda, our first selectman. Mr. Steve Machio, our superintendent of schools. Dr. Paul Smotis, who was the interim superintendent and was here all through this winter. And Mr. Richard Hartenstein Jr., who is going to be giving us the WPCA budget. I've also asked, and Mrs. Midda has asked, and the schools asked for the department heads to be here, so if there are questions, we do have the experts to answer them. At this time, Mr. Hartenstein, are you prepared for your budget?
Thank you for allowing me to come to the public hearing tonight. I would like to first thank my WPCA board for presenting a fiscally responsible budget and trying to keep our rates to a minimum for what we would need in not spending any extra money that isn't needed. So if we could just start on the top, I think that's probably the easiest way. I'll just go line item by line item. The biggest one I really would like to talk about is the operational personnel. And if we can remember back a year ago when I presented the budget to the board of finance, in April 1st of this year, we were looking to hire an eighth employee at the plant. After looking at the budgets and trying to be fiscally responsible for it all, we chose to make some adjustments in our personnel, and we will only have seven people, so we will not be hiring the eighth person out of the plant. And saying that, if we looked at it, and I don't have it out here, but that was going to save us over $60,000 in a two-year span. So there's only a $1,900 increase, and that's just due to the adjustments. Weekend, over time, I did add a little extra because it appears that we've been getting called in for plug-ups, or alarms, snow removal, so that's $2,500 increase. We did hire a new employee, replacing employees, so we did have to up the uniforms. And then the insurances, that's just to give me whatever that percentage was that the treasurer's office told us, that's what we added in. If we go down to repair and maintenance of vehicles. Last year, we had in the budget to replace our 23-year-old tanker that we haul sludge to MDC with. And we also had that camera truck that we purchased from the other tri-town, which was Vernon and Ellington, and it was $18,000 that we had to come up with. So I was able to take that money out of that account with $53,734, and we actually put it into, split it up amongst a couple of other accounts. Repair and maintenance of the plant, the plant now is going on eight years old, and some of the equipment needs to be painted, and to do that properly, it needs to be sandblasted, and a professional needs to come in and actually do all that. So we rolled that money into the repair of the plants. Continuing education, it's always a good thing to send our guys to classes and keep us up on the latest technology, so we added $1,500 to that line item. We looked at a five-year run for the diesel generators. We had $3,000 in there. We were able to take $1,500 out of that. We felt that we were comfortable with that. We went to a new telephone system this year with the internet. Also, we will be putting online, one of our pump stations will have cell service to call back to the plant for any alarms, so we had to add $1,200 for that. We can go down to the sewer line maintenance. It's always a big number. We have $50,000 proposed, $8,700 more this year than last year. And one of the things also is Route 190 is going to be paved this year from the intersection of Route 32 all the way down to Betty Jeans. So to raise our manholes, we're looking at somewhere $1,500 to $1,700 per manhole. And also, the town roads, there's a couple of town roads that I was notified that they would be paving those roads, so we added that for that also. Pump station, our metal lane pump station was built in 1979. The pumps have been replaced, but the control panels haven't. And instead of showing it as a capital expenditure, we felt that we could put it into just regular line item and do it with our budget. So that's one of the, pump station's going to get rebuilt this year. Paying inspection fees over the years, the denitrification, there's a state program that you have to have a certain number, and we've talked about that in previous, about the plant not being able to handle some of the solids and so on. Our nitrification credit in the past was up to $30,000 that we had to spend in over the few years. It's gone down drastically. We still want to keep a $10,000 number in there because it's based on our flow. So as of like this year, our flows are pretty high with the groundwater, and we were able to take out $7,000. We felt we were comfortable with it. In the capital account this year, this is going to be one of the big ones that we were adding to when we felt that saving the money from the extra employee, we would put it into capital line maintenance. We're going to add the $50,900, and this will go into future projects that may have to be done to the sewer lines. Equipment-wise, we feel that we're in pretty good shape with equipment. So we were going to reduce the capital equipment number to by $18,000. We're still going to put in $30,000. And then the vehicle replacement fund, if you remember, last year, we had a catastrophic failure with our back truck, and we purchased a new one. We took that money out of our capital account, but we actually said to ourselves, we were going to borrow that money, and for 10 years, we're going to put the $25,000 back in. That will pay us back for the back truck, and then in the future, we would have money in there to replace it if we have to in 15 or 20 years down the road. And then all the other vehicles, we have a 1997 truck that we've been rebuilding little by little over the years, the last three years. We put a new bed on it, we put a new transmission in it, we had it painted this year. So instead of replacing that truck every 15 years, as what we have for replacing vehicles, we feel that that truck will be good, so we don't need to put as much money into the account. So we're just going to add $35,000, $10,000 for future, and then the 25 is the reimbursement for the back truck. Rentalless sewer pipes, you know, that's going to stay the same. So it comes down to the bottom, the revenues, our budget is basically based off of our revenues. We don't, we are not going to raise the rates. We did get a little extra unanticipated money from 3M, the surcharge that they gave us for the extra solids that they gave us. So we needed to show that, we used that for a two-year average. We had to show a little extra in there. So if you look at it, we do have a 1.8% increase, but it's only because of the extra unexpected revenue from 3M. As of right now, 63% of our budget is spent. If we go back to the '16, '17 budget, you can see we spent 96% of our budget. So we feel we're pretty comfortable with our numbers. If you flip the page over, I was talking about the capital accounts, and over the last five or six years, this is what we have put into our capital accounts. The goals, we're showing down on the bottom, and we're showing you what those line items potentially would be for in the future. So we're trying to hit that $1 million number to have in the bank in case you have a catastrophic failure or replacements. We're at $621,000, and that would be including the '18, '19 budget for this year. And then down just below that, you can see my capital plan for the five and 10 years, for the projects. Some sewer line replacement, the thickeners, we're going to do the clarifiers this year, the thickeners we're going to look to do next year. Mountain Road Sewer Line, the 190 pump station. Ultraviolet, I'm hoping in about five years, right now, it's 18 years old, and we're hoping after 20 years, we can look into replacing that. That was not done when the plant was upgraded, there was nothing touched with that. Skated system, because the computers are sold, or they get outdated so quickly, that's kind of on a 10-year plan, but we were able to upgrade the PCs this year with the help of our, the town's IT person and our skater people. Excuse me, the 2009 pickup. So that's kind of just my plan, there's really nothing else. We were able to do a sewer evaluation, we paid out of this year's budget. Camera truck with Vernon and Ellington, as I explained already, the replacement of the tank trailer. And I just want to state too, we had two trailers, they were 23-years-old. They were originally purchased when the transfer station, at the time was the dump, and the transfer station was open. And those were purchased with a town bond grant, and we were able to sell those trucks and give that one back to the general company because it wasn't WPCA money. So it was $18,000 we were able to turn back into that. We chose not to rebuild one of the, or one of the trailers, we chose to sell both trailers and to buy a brand-new one, hoping to get another 20 years out of it. The fork truck was replaced a couple of years ago, and the back truck was replaced. So that's what we feel is a decent budget. Again, we will not be raising the rates. I'm hoping for questions, if anybody has any questions at this time.
I have a comment. Thank you very much. The explanations right next to everyone you rely on is wonderful, because you don't have to write that much down. You've done a wonderful job on it.
Thank you.
But are there any other comments or questions that you have, board?
You used the word unexpected revenue from 3M. How is it unexpected?
So a couple of years of that 3M has been giving us a lot of solids. The state came in, and they're renewing their permit. And in the meantime, they asked for a two-year extension on their permit so they could get these solids under control. The WPCA said we could allow the two years, but in the regulations that we have, we charge for extra, that extra solids that aren't what regular wastewater consists of. So we figured the number was going to be roughly $50,000 a year. $52 was what we put in the budget for last year. That number now went up to $90,000. I don't know what it will be next year. If they choose to cut the solids down some, then it would be, it would be less, but we felt the $80,000 would be a decent number.
And they know the number now, if I'm not correct?
Correct, they do know the number. They've been getting billed for two years now, and that's what we're going up with.
Thank you.
Yes?
If I can explain this to you, it's $300 per household for sewer charge for six months. I think that's what it is.
It's $300 per residential home per year.
Oh, per year, okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
So if there's a family with six children and two adults, you've got eight people, and they pay $300 a year.
Yes.
If you have two, an elderly couple, they pay $300 a year.
Correct.
In Vernon and Rockville, and Wellington, and Ashford, they base it on your water bill, the sewer charge.
So that's a good point. Two years ago, we actually had a subcommittee that looked into this, because there was other people that had a one-bedroom apartment that they'd be getting charged the same amount for. And when we sat down and figured it out, it, some people would benefit from being charged by the meter, but it would be a substantial increase on other people, and it wasn't fair, we felt, to put the burden on some people and not everybody. And we felt that budget-wise, the best way to do this was the way we'd be charged. There is towns that charge both ways. I can't, I don't remember the exact numbers. We did have the exact numbers on what towns charged, meter-wise, and also just a flat rate. Also, Connecticut Water does not go to every home that has sewer. So for somebody like myself, I have sewer connected to my home. I don't have Connecticut Water. I would either have to put a meter in, and then the WPCF would have to send somebody up monthly, quarterly, half, every half year, and read that meter, and that would be also labor-intensive in another position for that. So these are just quick highlights that we looked into. There's a lot more of a report that we actually have that stated that would be the best way for the town of Stafford to charge the way we charge. And I think, Dave, you said on that.
Right. Yeah, the one factor that swayed us, I think, was the fact that we're still in the lowest tier in the whole state in terms of what people pay. If you look, even some of the towns around us, they're paying like $800 for 75 or 70 single homes. Everybody pays the $300 a year. Considering we were as low as we were, we decided it wasn't worth it buying the equipment that would, you know, you could drive with a car or the computer, hold equipment and record some of the gallon usage from Connecticut Water, but you can't do it for everybody. And frankly, the system is working well, and it's about as efficient as it can get compared to other towns. So we've decided to stay with what we have.
There are industry standards as far as calculations, as far as what water consumption is for a person on an annual basis. Another, I'm just shooting outside the box. Another way of looking at it is, you know, determine, determine, okay, I know, you know, some of the elderly and things like that, they're on fixed incomes and things like that, and there's two people living in the home, it presents a significant burden. Perhaps you turn on, you can take a look at and say, okay, if there's two people in a home, here's the average consumption for a family of two in the facility. Okay? And you can look at, say, okay, the consumption for, let's say, a family of four, or six, or eight. I mean, based on national averages, as far as, I mean, because they take a look at how many times the toilet is flushed, and, you know, filling up the tub to take a bath and things like that, they figure all of this into this thing. That might be another avenue, which might be able to give a better assessment, less of a burden on you guys, as far as going around with the truck, trying to meter everything, which could be a nightmare. Understanding, a lot of people, I have well water, so you can't tell how many gallons of water I'm using. Understand this significant challenge that you have. You know, I mean, I'm just throwing that out there, that's a possibility.
Sure.
That might be able to be looked at, you know.
Yeah, yeah. And then it would be, and just to follow that, is to, okay, so there's two people here living in this home, but now my in-law just, or my daughter moved in to help you, so now you have three, does that, does somebody tell you about that? You know, so you run into that, but it's a good, it's a good point, and I think, I think again, this will be brought up within the next few years to look at it again, because something that works today may not work tomorrow. So I think it's an ongoing revolving door that we would be looking at.
If you don't mind, I've got another question here. Adrian, I know I'm looking at the five-year capital improvement projects.
Wait one second. Everybody here, does he need a microphone? Can everybody hear him?
Do I need to speak up a little bit?
Yeah, you can.
Okay. I'm looking at the first line item, the five-to-10-year capital improvement projects, talking about Route 190 West Street Sewer Line Replacement. It's due next year, okay, and it's going to be a million-dollar cap, is what is projected or estimated that to be, okay? I'm a firm believer in the capital improvement projects, the funds are there, I like that. That helps you offset the future costs of unexpected expenditures that are coming in. But I'm looking at this, saying, okay, we know that we're going to have to upgrade the sewer line, okay? And then I go back up and I take a look at the main sewer line repair and replacement, and right now, we have a balance in there of $234,638. And if I, next year, we have a million-dollar expenditure that's coming in to hit us, that's a pretty good gap, okay? Where is that going to come? Is that, I mean, that's not going to be put in a one-year budget for you guys, I understand that.
Right. So that's a conversation that's going to have, that's not going to have anything to do with this budget.
I understand.
And potentially down the road, we're not really sure how exactly that will be handled. That sewer line is being evaluated right now. We don't have a specific number. Again, that's why you see it as a capital project, it's just something that's out here that we're going to have to look at. Do I have an answer for you right now? No. But I can tell you that we'll probably sit down, have a conversation again, and try and come up with the best solution for the town.
Right. I'm looking, again, I understand.
This is all in the '18, '19 budget we are looking at.
I understand, but I'm looking at, okay, where I'm going with this, I guess, to get out of the box here with it, is I'm a believer in, you know, if you might take a little bit more of a hit in what your service fees are on an annual basis, to bump up a little bit of your capital expenditures to absolutely cover what you know is coming in the next three, four, five years, covering yourself a little bit. That's all I'm saying. I mean, are we charging enough at this point to bump up our capital improvements projects to cover some of these things? I mean, we know we have expenditures that are coming, and that's really what it's for. It also is that rainy day fund, in case all of a sudden, something, you know, two pumps fail, okay, we need to make sure we have something to cover that. If a catastrophic failure is there, we need to make sure we have something to cover that. That's all I'm saying, is maybe we could, but again, it's your guys' realm, so I'm just.
Point taken, and just, I'll touch on one more thing, catastrophic failure. The filters, I mentioned it a couple of months back to the board of finance, that are filters that weren't touched during the upgrade. It was, the ultraviolet system and the filter weren't upgraded. They did fail on us, we are in the process of rebuilding it. It's a $600,000 cost, and we are not coming back to the town and asking, because it really, our feeling was, is this falls under the O&M of what the WPCA budget represents. So we are, we are taking care of that, and I'm sure we'll have future talks on the best way we can come up with a solution for all this.
I'm not beating you up.
No, I understand. I understand, I'm not taking it that way.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Are you ready for the budget? Does everybody have a copy of this? Handout?
Yeah, I just thought I would, I already presented to you guys, so I figured I would. First of all, thank everybody for coming. I'd like to thank you for listening to all of us, and I'd like to thank all my department heads, and everybody for being here to answer any question that anybody might have tonight. I'm here to present the board of selectmen's budget that we passed unanimously on February 20th, 2018. The town departments were asked to submit their budgets to us in January of this, of this year. We've reviewed all the budgets and have made adjustments that we felt we could done, we could do without any major impact to any town services or public safety. A history of spending was looked at for three to four years back to see where savings could be made. The budget that I'm presenting tonight is approximately a half a percent higher than our budget from last year. Since the budget was presented to the board of selectmen, to the board of finance, I apologize, a few departments recently came through with some adjustments that need to be made before the next public hearing. You'll see that on the list when I go through that. We'll be reviewing the adjustments, and we'll work diligently to try to bring in a very, very good budget for you. The handouts you have include all the departments approved 2017, '18 budgets, and what's being requested for the fiscal year '18 and '19. This will also include any increase or decrease for that specific department. I will give a, I'll give a quick budget overview of the departments, and I have some major departments that are here that have complex budgets, so they can answer any question that anybody would have. So let's go. Our first one on here is the board of selectmen. We have minor increases and decreases overall through the line items. It equals $199. Probate court, it's the best estimate based on Stafford residents who utilize the probate court, so we can only guess who's going to use the court during the year. Our IT department, he has an $800 increase. He has to do updates on Windows 10, and it's also for licensing fees. Registrar voters, they consolidated a few accounts. We're still looking at adjustments for them, but there won't be many changes. The town clerk, we've made no changes in her budget. The board of finance, we reduced the cost in legal notices and office supplies. It's based on a past history that we found. So that's a negative for $1,250. The assessors office is a $470 increase. It's various items in their line items, just a few changes. Board of assessment appeals, it's an elected salary, and we have no change in that. The tax collector's office, we have an overall decrease. They did changes in billing, and they have a decrease in summer help. Treasurer's office, we have no change in that office. Legal services, we have no change in legal services. The town clerk, we have a $1,400 overall increase, and that's due to document microfilming for any online documents and in-house books that they may have. Building department, or in buildings, we have a $7,450 overall decrease. There's a large increase in that line item in water costs. We had seven new fire hydrants put in right along Route 190, and then we had changes in the building maintenance and repairs. Fuel, oil, and propane, there's, we're putting no change in that, that's fuel and oil for the town buildings. Fixed charges, it's up $106,964. That's submitted to us by the CFO. It's an estimated 10% increase in primarily insurance and pension-related increases. That's provided to us by our insurance broker and pension consultants. Capital outlay, $45,500 decrease. The energy committee has 17, 18 money to spend in working on grants for bridge repair, and money will be budgeted by the town for matching for grants that we may get. Judgment and losses, there's no change in that. Safety and protection, we have a small decrease in there. Police protection, we decreased by one resident state trooper, and it's an overall decrease in that department. Emergency services, there's a small decrease. And I just want to say that they do a great job with staying on or under budget, and I have to say, thank God for the volunteers that do this, because they do a wonderful job for our town. Fire marshal, they have a small decrease, the budget was adjusted, and we based it on a three-year history of spending. Building zoning and wetlands, they have a minor increase and decrease, it's a decrease overall of $1,150 for the department. The transfer station, they have an increase of $2,640. They have a very small staff there, and if someone's out, we just need to put somebody in there for coverage. The highway department, it's showing a decrease and a small, there may be a possible small increase if the lease purchase that's not used this year, we transfer in next year. So right now, it's showing a decrease, but depending on what happens, it might be a slight increase over next year. Town aid for roads, we're showing no change. However, the state did inform us that we may not be getting our second portion of our, our aid for the roads. They send it to us in two different proportions, one at the beginning of the year and one toward They send it to us in two different proportions, one at the beginning of the year and one toward the end, and I just found out they may not be giving us our second portion. We don't know that yet, though. The rec commission, they have a $100,000 increase. They need new lights at the high school track. They need to be replaced to the cost of approximately $250,000 to $300,000. It's a possibility to budget over the next three years, and we're looking into options. So that will probably be a change for the next public hearing. The parks department, they have a $20,000 decrease overall. We did a three-year history of spending, and we're looking to possibly restructure there. Holidays, we did a $3,500 decrease overall. We're working on what events we're gonna have, because next year's our 300th anniversary for the town. So the committee is working on many different events for the entire year, so, and they have budgeted for that. Economic development, we have a slight decrease. We did a look back, and there's been very little spent. The Conservation Commission, we're keeping that flat with no change. The Arts Commission, there's a $1,000 decrease overall. Debt services, it's the payment in interest on previously approved long-term debt as provided by our financial services, and those are debts, they're legal obligations that we have to pay. Pollution abatement, there's a decrease in there. It's about environmental pollution. We took a three-year back, and not much was spent, so we were able to take $400 out of that. Health services, there's a small decrease. North Central District Health Department is our health department that covers the town. They charge us $4.67 per capita rate based on the population that we have in town, and it also includes about $1,000 for gas for the vehicle that he uses for the town. It's North Central District's vehicle, but if he's here, he uses the gas. So there's a small decrease there. The community center, there's an overall decrease of $1,660. Family services, they're currently showing an increase, but for the second public hearing, it'll show a small decrease overall because of new information that had come in, and Judy is here and can explain that to everybody if anybody has a question. Transfer out, there's a $10,000 decrease right now that's showing, but for the second public hearing, there may be a possible increase due to an unanticipated retirement that just was brought to our attention. The library, there's a $3,926 overall increase for their whole budget. So, our budget that we're requesting for next year is $13,033,925. And I'm presenting tonight a budget that's a half a percent increase over last year, and it will be raised $69,693.50 is what we're proposing.
And that's it? If anybody has a question?
Thank you all very much. Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't even...
Would you like to come up to the...
Governor Marty?
Hello.
I'm there. I just wanted to ask you, the cost of the lighting at the high school, the pathway into quarter of a million dollars, $300,000. So that was already budgeted, and you only, you budgeted short by $100,000?
There was $50,000 in there that was budgeted last year. So we're gonna put the same $50,000 in, and we increased it by 100... Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
I have a big mouth, I couldn't hear you. So what we were doing is increasing it another $100,000. We have information that came to us after the fact when I put it in here. I may be able to decrease that line item to be able to budget that out over a three-year We're trying to budget it out. Originally, it was going to be the whole $250,000. I decreased it, and...
It's just seeing what a lot of money for traffic lighting, which is only used, or how often.
I think they're used, and I can have somebody come up and discuss that, but I think they're used by the schools, they're used by people in town that go up there all the time. The kids use it, the rec department uses it. So I think that a lot of people do use the track up there. So if you want, somebody can come and answer that question about why they're so expensive. I know we've done some research on it, too, that right now, I believe, Bruce, you can answer me if I have the... Eight lights are up there?
There are eight pole towers now. The proposal is to remove those eight poles and put up four new poles with new LED lights.
Did you hear that? I'm sorry. That's okay. There were eight towers.
There are eight towers currently. The new proposal for musco lighting is to remove those eight towers and put up four towers with new LED technology lights, which is to reduce the cost, the overall operating cost.
Can I ask you a question? On your quote, are you getting relief from Northeast Utilities on the lighting you're putting in, some type of rebates for upgrading to a high-efficiency product, or?
No, and I don't believe we're eligible because of the amount of hours. Eversource only gives credit for 200,000, or 2,000 hours of use a year, and they only get used eight hours a day every day.
And I'm sorry, I didn't think to introduce, this is Mr. Bruce Davis, he's the Director of Facilities, so I'm sorry about that.
Well, my only concern was, that's quite a bit of money.
Yeah, and it is a lot of money, but we do get a lot of compliments on that facility from other schools, because it's good football up there, and soccer programs, and the field hockey programs all get use out of those lights during their seasons. So, and it's been around since 1979. It opened up right after I graduated. Really, not a ton has been done since then, so it really is a requirement to get them fixed and replaced. And I hate to see them go away because they've been here so long, and it is an impressive facility when it's, you know, all been running.
I guess I never thought a light deteriorating, other than to replace the bulbs maybe, but not the whole stations in them.
Rust, I mean, over 30, 40 years.
And we have engineered reports on it. Yeah, they've been rusted over the years, and from 1979 to now. Plus, I think from what Mr. Davis said, the lighting is better, so we can go with less, with, you know, fewer poles, because that was one of the questions I asked. If we go with fewer poles, could be cut down on the amount of budget, and that was with the budget.
Rick Zulik from the Department of Public Works, I had the engineering report conducted, and can tell you that the poles are made of steel. They're starting to rust, and the bigger issue is the bases. They're made of concrete and steel, and at some point, they will be at risk of falling. We're either have to replace them, or remove them at some point. I think they're probably good for another three or four years, but we really need to start thinking about budgeting little pieces so that we afford them, and we have to do a replacement.
Did we receive more than one bid on it? I mean, did we put it out for, for Mr. Davis?
Yes, we've received, we did our research, we've received several bids. Musco Lighting is one of the leaders in this industry. We have two other musco systems in town, so this would join in and use the same control, so we can, the AD could be able to use everything right from his computer, turn on, turn off. So that way, there's no abuse of the systems. The system we have now is flip a switch, and anybody that happens to have a key to the box can turn the lights on.
Are those other two systems at the school complex?
No, they're at the Little League facility at Keel and Field.
Mark Maynard, I just have a question about the combination of the general highway budget and the town aid for the roads. So the general highway budget goes down by $60,000, and you talk about, you don't know what's coming from the state, and that could be up to half of this amount. I'm wondering...
The town aid roads, what?
The town aid for the roads.
Okay.
Right. So, is there, I'm surprised that the general highway fund goes down at 60, given the work that's been done over the, over this point in time, right? I see the eyes out there all the time. But I'm also concerned that the state, if the state aid is threatened, what does that mean in the longer term, over this year going into next year? Are we putting aside, what's gonna be sacrificed?
The reason for the decrease, the reason for the decrease in the highways, we're talking about the two roads, Rick could probably, Mr. Zulik can probably talk to that. But one of the reasons for that, the decrease, is right now, in the budget that we have, there is a line item for lease purchase. And if we don't use that next year, then we'll put it in. If we take it out, then it'll be a decrease in that. Can I speak to that?
The lease purchase, or the...
Well, two, like, what is the plan?
Yeah, it's a combination.
Okay. Yeah. So we receive money from the state as a, it's called tower funding, and it is, we receive monies for improved and unimproved roads, and we, the fact is, we really don't know what we're gonna be getting this year. It's a big question mark for us. We're hoping that the state's gonna come through and provide us with the kind of funding that we've had in the past, but it's certainly not gonna be great for this year, and I think that that juries out on the next year.
So are these projects that can be put off, kind of luxury projects, kind of things that you need to do, or things that can be put off, or are there things that really can be cut into operations?
To be perfectly frank, the only flexibility I have in my budget from the time I started this position is our paving projects. And the other stuff, paving, well, we could spend unlimited amount of money on paving. I try to sneak out as much money as I can, I try to pave as many roads as I can every year. Ultimately, my goal is to provide the town with a 10-year plan for paving. It's gonna be an expensive project. It certainly cannot be included as part of a budget. I think it's probably gonna have to be bonded, and it's probably gonna be a $20 million 10-year plan. This is what roads cost. I mean, we, the stuff that's in this budget is really maintenance, and we've worked very, very hard to really eat numbers down as much as possible, you know, stay in a budget that is ultimately passed by the town. I don't, I have no prospects of removing any major projects from it.
My concern is that the dollars will go down, and we won't be able to do the things that, that would be part of those problems.
We stretch it best we can. Yeah. Yeah, this, these, this, I guess, that just reminded me, that this money that comes in to us from the state is cumulative. So we do actually have a backup, and I try, I try to put a little bit aside every year and keep it in our passbook. It's there for emergency. I'm always concerned about the loss, you know, catastrophic loss of roads. When I first started, we lost Fisk Avenue at Prospect Heights due to flooding. Prior to my startup, we had, we lost a good section of Rocky Dundee. These things happen, and they're very expensive, and I have nothing in the budget to plan for that, you know, financially. So we have passbooks that collect money. I try to save a little bit every year, so our passbook at this point has somewhere close to a half a dollar.
Do I need to say where I'm from and all that stuff? Just Diane, but I'm really happy. Two quick questions. First of all, I love being able to walk at the track at night, or I usually end up going around the high school. If the new lights go in, could they be put on a timer so that they would be available longer for people?
How does that work, but it's a question.
That would be a possibility. We thought, the AD and I have been working on that for public to use them, it would be the same with the cars.
Okay. But that's possible, I mean, okay.
There's a possibility, but there are no terms of cost.
All right. I mean, during the summer, you can go to like nine, but in the winter. And the second thing is, the EDC has not met since September 5th, I believe, so any of that money hasn't been used because there hasn't been any planning around that? Is it possible to make that money go into the next fiscal year so that, it's 2,000 right now?
It could, as long as there's an invoice, that can use something for it.
Okay.
So I would suggest bringing that up at your meeting.
All right. So if we make a plan for something, and we need to, like, to use this year...
I think you can encumber it.
Okay, great.
If you want to add that in.
All right.
But I did do a look back on that, and there wasn't much, but I do understand. I didn't look back just this year, because I know there hadn't been any moving.
Right. I guess I'm just saying, yeah, if it reflects this year, it's hard to say.
Absolutely. So that's why I did, in a lot of the budgets, I went back three and four years, to make sure that I could really give a good, good thing. But yes, if there is something before the end of the fiscal year that we need to do with it, and you have an invoice, and you know what you're gonna do, you can encumber it to the next year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions or comments?
Good budget, Mayor.
Thank you. Mrs. Nettie made a comment thanking all of the volunteers in this town for as much as they do. And I'd like to have Mr. Lawrenceetti, sorry, Chief Lawrenceetti, stand up and give you an idea of what the departments, the fire departments going through right now with your volunteers. Would you need the mic?
Probably not. A fairly loud call. And I certainly appreciate the comments, and certainly the compliment from the Office of First Selectmen. What a lot of people aren't realizing, and I'm sure Chief Lucia can attest to it, and Chief Moore, my colleagues who were in the audience, is that the discretionary portion of our budgets tends to be extremely narrow, because there are so many mandates that we're required to do, and things like insurance. We have to keep the lights on, we have to have insurance, we have to repair our vehicles. If anybody looks at our line items in our budget, and you're gonna see a very, very narrow window in there, which is actually discretionary money. And we're all going through the same thing, and what we did this year, certainly West Dafford, is we shaved some of that discretionary money down a little harder, because we had a 27% increase in insurance. And our insurance is very good. It pays for all kinds of catastrophic stuff, and Lord knows we get it, because we are in that type of business that we break there, just by the nature of the beast. And certainly, for activities in West Dafford District, we had an 18% increase in activity last year. And I can see a bunch of people go, "That's just by the increase. We did over 1,000 runs, over 1,000 plus of service last year." And we can attribute a lot of that to several societal factors right now. Number one is, people are just plain using services more than they ever did. Second of all, we have that hideous opioid crisis that we're in the middle of. We have a huge psychiatric issue with the populace in this country right now, and it's deinstitutionalization of people has paid into it, the general stress of modern living, and we get more psyche valve calls now probably than I can ever remember. And just the general calls for service, you have a lot more traffic on our roads, and we fit right into that model of 70%, EMS runs, and 30% fire calls. In our district, we've added more patients at the Evergreen Healthcare Center. We now have the Woodland Springs Development, and we have certainly Avery Park. So it is busy, and we're averaging probably right now around three calls a day on average, and that's with an all-volunteer force. I would love to come to the town and say that we need full-time people, because it's common. We can't, with any good conscience, come to you with that right now, based on the budget situation in the state of Connecticut. It probably just wouldn't happen. It's harder to get people to volunteer. The demands on volunteers are tremendous. The demands on volunteers are tremendous. You have mandatory training. You've got mandatory drilling. And then let's throw a thousand incidents on top of that. So, and, and there's a changing, there's, there's a changing demographic in the fire service. Some of the folks coming along aren't as dedicated as they used to be for lots of reasons. Everybody works out of town now. Uh, I remember when I was a young fella, you know, I, I worked in Stafford, so you were available to go to calls during the day. Employers would let people go to calls during the day. Not so much anymore. But that's just kind of an overview of, of what we're doing. If you have any questions, I'd certainly be happy to answer it at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And now for the superintendent of schools, Mr. Macchio.
Can I speak?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't see the handout.
I would just like to add, Chief Lucia from Stafford. Okay, Chief Lanzetti covered it very well, but let me stink about the volunteers. It's the most underpaid service people have right now, okay? You want to talk about going home at night and not feeling wanted? It's the fire service. My budget alone, out of what you see there, is about a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. And I too are almost at what Chief Lanzetti's calls are, seven hundred and ninety calls this year. And if you were to break those calls down and pay for those actual calls, it would have cost the town probably close to three hundred thousand dollars. And our budget is at a hundred and ninety-four. Okay, so your services are not getting paid for whatsoever. An average call in a paid department per person, if you look at Hartford and that, is a dollar ninety-four. Okay, most people pay three dollars and forty cents for their cell phone service daily. It's just, we need to wake up. There is no capital plan whatsoever. I'm stating that right now. We've had board of fire, fire commissions and all that, ten-year, twenty, and fifteen-year plans. They're all filed away in some file cabinet. There is no capital plan. You just purchased two fire trucks that almost cost a million dollars. You need to purchase two fire trucks in less than three years. There is no way we're going to be prepared for that. We really need to wake up. We really need to look at restructuring and possibly even look at fire tax districts like other towns have. That's why Ed Field's taxes are lower. Everybody always throws, oh, well, Ed Field's taxes are so low. They have a fire district tax. And we really need to start looking at that. How are we going to pay for our services? How are we going to get paid people? We should have had paid people three years ago. Willington has paid people. Summers is putting on seven more. Why is Summers bigger than Stafford? It's the same size. Coventry paid people? The town of Wales in Massachusetts paid people. Where is Stafford? The two fire departments and the P.D. protect your tax dollars. Why are we the most underfunded department? And that's all I have to say.
That's one of the reasons why I wanted them both to speak because we've been hearing about this year after year. And unfortunately, with the budget, we haven't been able to do a lot about it. But it is coming, folks. It truly is coming that we're going to have to pay our fire departments. And I wanted everyone to be aware of that. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Steve Ibaka, who is our superintendent of schools, and Dr. Paul Swobodowskis, who was the interim superintendent.
Thank you. Um, I will be working with a handout that was out in the back. So if you don't have one, please get one for yourself right now. And if you all have one, then I will take you through the budget that we presented, I presented to the Board of Education initially. I was the interim superintendent from the beginning of October until the beginning of March. And I replaced, uh, the previous superintendent on an interim basis. While I was acting as interim, I also helped Board of Education do a search. And we came up with an outstanding candidate to be your next and current and permanent superintendent, Mr. Macchio. Um, but during those five months, I want you to know that when I walked in the door in early October, this was a school district in crisis. We had seven out of our eleven administrators, brand new. Uh, some of them from other districts, some of them had experience, some of them did not have experience. We had a climate issue. We had a climate study that was performed by an outside group. We had teachers, we had employees who were not happy. The entire school district, in my opinion, has come together wonderfully over the last five months. And not just because of what I did, but because of the collaboration and the efforts of the new administrators, the teachers, the nurses, the secretaries, the custodians, the maintenance workers. I don't want to leave anybody out, the I.T. department, but everyone, including the board. And I thank the board for having the confidence in me to help lead the district through the turmoil that was going on when I walked in the front door. But I also had help on the town side. Uh, Mr. Frasenelli, who was first elected when I walked in, was very helpful. Gave me some good hints and some good recommendations. Mary took over from Tony. Rick Zuick, who, well, fifteen days, Rick, we talked in the morning about four o'clock in the morning and talked about whether the roads were ready for schools to open. I've been a, an educator forty-three years. And if I'm most proud of anything is I've never had a school bus accident and I've never lost a child. And thanks to Rick and the efforts of his department and the bus company and everybody in this town, I still kept that record intact, and I may retire undefeated. But again, thank you, Rick. Lieutenant Duncan, down in the back, the quiet, the quiet leader of the local police department, very helpful. Uh, when the issue hit in Parkland, Florida, my first call was to Tom. I said, Tom, how do we stand? He said, I have utmost confidence in our security system and our personnel, and I trust Tom's judgment. Uh, Lisa Baxter, the town finance director, who's out ill, very helpful when I came to the office of superintendent because we spend a lot of money. We spent twenty-seven million dollars of taxpayer, taxpayer dollars, including some state and federal grants. But we are the major employer, and we are the major spending company of Stafford. And I think we do a lot with the money that the town of Stafford gives us, as well as the state. And I also want to thank the parents, who've been very supportive and have allowed us to move forward as a school district and have supported all of the programs that we do have. On page two is a copy of our mission statement. I'm not going to read that to you, but it's a statement that's been in existence for a few years. This is what we do and why we do it. And I'll let you read that at your leisure. On page three, whenever a superintendent has to put a budget together, he has to work within, or she has to work within a framework. And the framework that I work with in any district, I've done budgets for nine school districts in nine different communities. And our first and most important obligation is to provide a comprehensive program for all our students and to continue to build on the successes. Everybody in this room hopefully went to school, and everybody in this room's schooling was paid for by someone else. Either your parents, who were property owners, or cousins, or neighbors. It's time for us to pay it forward. Someone paid for me, someone paid for Mr. Macchio, someone paid for you. And now it's our turn to help pay for that. One of the things I did when I first came in was to look at historical spending. And that was a tough thing to wrap my arms around because we had three business managers in the last two and a half years. Business managers for the schools are like finance directors for the town. We had three superinten-, we have had three superintendents since October. Previous superintendent, myself, Steve. I mentioned earlier, we have seven out of eleven administrators who are brand new to Stafford. Quite a lot of turmoil, but the continuity and the consistency was what I was hoping to get through in, in those five months that I was superintendent. And I think we've put our finger on all of the issues and identified the issues and corrected any of the issues that we found in the budget. And I'll get into that a little bit more. Identify programmatic needs. There were two large issues that we had to address, one of which was a staffing and program problem at the middle school. We didn't have a schedule that was functional. And by that, I mean, some kids could not take certain classes because we didn't have a schedule that worked, and we didn't have enough staff. Another issue was that we have a lot of kids in Stafford that have special needs. And if you turn to page eight of this handout, this will give you a sense of the kids that we have to service in Stafford and the kids we want to service in Stafford. We can't service all the kids in Stafford as much as we'd like to. But twenty-five percent of the kids in Stafford Public Schools are receiving some type of special education service. And we are obligated to do that under Section 504 of Special Education Law, as well as the I.D.E.A. or Individual with Disabilities Act. The, another parameter of students with needs, not just educational needs, but financial needs, is that the percentage of students eligible for free and reduced lunch in Stafford is almost thirty-four percent. One out of every three kids in this town qualifies for free and reduced lunch. So that gives you a sense of the socioeconomics of Stafford. All five schools in Stafford are eligible for Title I funds. What does that mean? That means we qualify for grants to help us provide programming in the schools. Currently, in two thousand, two thousand seventeen, eighteen, the Title I grant is a one hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars and change grant. That helps us provide extra programs and extra staffing within our schools that you, as taxpayers, don't have to pay for. The number of Section 504 students increased from a hundred and twenty-seven in December of two thousand sixteen to a hundred and eighty-two currently, which is an increase of fifty-five identified students. The number of special education students remains steady at two hundred and thirty-four. And again, keep an eye, keep in mind that we only have fifteen hundred-plus students in Stafford. So this is a significant proportion of those students. The last issue on page three talks about safety and school security. As I mentioned, Lieutenant Duncan and I have talked about our school's security. He's comfortable, and if he's comfortable, I'm comfortable. We have spent thousands of dollars on school security. We were eligible for some state grants. And if you go to our schools and you see our security systems, I think you'll be impressed. But we need to maintain them. And what you have to also keep in mind, and this came to my attention about a month ago after Parkland, Florida, this generation of kids in our schools, starting with seniors in high school all the way down to pre-k, this is the first generation of kids who think school shooting is a way of life. You think of when we went to school or when our kids went to school, this, this wasn't happening. But if you go back to nineteen ninety-nine when Columbine occurred, it was only eighteen years ago, this generation of kids doesn't know school safety like we did. And we have to protect them. And we will protect them. The next part of my process when I put a budget together is look at assumptions and priorities. Stafford's mission, goals, and value statements will be adhered to. Again, that's in the front of the document. Safety and health standards will be maintained. We talked about that. Stafford's facilities and infrastructure will be maintained. You have three outstanding buildings on Leventhal Road that are worth upward of two hundred million dollars. We've got to take care of those buildings. We have to maintain them. We have solar, electrical power. We have geothermal power. And I'm going to get into the solar and geothermal later in the budget. But again, we have to maintain these facilities. All of the accounts for go, for salary and benefit changes will be adjusted by contract. We have contracts in place for teachers and administrators for next year. We're currently initiating the process for contracts for all of the other employees, like custodians, secretaries, paraprofessions. We know that federal and state grants will continue to decrease, so the burden is going to fall on the taxpayers, the local taxpayers in every town. All budgetary accounts will be reviewed to ensure that previous surpluses and deficits have been addressed. My background is in school finance. That's what my Ph.D. is in. That's what all my experience is in. When I came to Stafford, I worked with our new business official. I worked with Christine Marinelli, the superintendent's assistant. I worked with the administrators. And we poured over every single account to make sure that people were being properly charged to the right accounts, that purchase orders were being charged to the right accounts, and that if there were accounts that had surpluses over time, like one or two or three years, then we would reduce those accounts. If there were accounts that had deficits over one or two or three years, we would increase those accounts. We want to balance what we have. And again, because of the change in leadership in the business office and in the superintendent's office, we needed to take that project on. And I want to thank those people for doing that because I think, even though we're not perfect, we're a lot better off today than we were six months ago. Enrollment will remain stable. Well, that's what we thought in September, but as of today, we have twenty-nine, I'm sorry, fifteen more students than we did on September twenty-ninth. Excuse me. Student transportation costs will increase by contract. We are contracted with M&amp;J Bus Company. That increases two point five percent. We know that special ed tuition and transportation costs will continue to rise, and you'll see that later on in the budget. Next, page five. Budget priorities. This is what we think, or these are the items we think are the most important part of our educational process, our school system, and our values. We have to meet all state and federal requirements. We have to provide a free and appropriate education. That's what goes back to the, let's pay it forward. We have to give all students the opportunity to make adequate yearly progress. We had to evaluate modified program at Stafford High School and Stafford Middle School to get more efficient scheduling and staff utilization. And I'll let Mr. Macchio talk about that later. We need to continue to hire, train, and retain highly qualified teachers, administrators, and support staff. One of my priorities is to protect staffing levels, especially classroom, classroom teachers, from budget reductions. This budget is, and I'll use the term from the WPCA, gentlemen, this is a fiscally responsible budget. We have caught, and we have looked at every single account, and we feel that this budget in front of you, which is point nine eight less, it's point nine eight percent increase over this year's budget, is a, as responsible a budget as we could put forward. However, if this budget is reduced, either through a referendum or through other political bodies' decisions, the next level of staff, or the next level of reductions will be staff reductions. To identify new revenue sources wherever possible. One of the questions I've seen over the years in budget hearings like this is, well, you always want to spend money. Do you ever generate money? Well, yes, we are. We have two new programs that will be initiated this year. One is called Medicaid reimbursement. And by that, what we mean is there are students in our schools who qualify for Medicaid. Their family qualifies for Medicaid. If we provide them services, psychological services, social services, guidance services, nursing services, all those services that we provide, if we identify them, we're going to get reimbursed for it. The second income or revenue source is going to be a Social Security alternative plan. Under federal law, if you have seasonal employees, or if you have part-time employees, they do not have to stay under Social Security. They can go into what's called a Social Security alternative plan. So where's the savings there? Well, the savings comes in that if they choose to be in the Social Security alternative plan, which is kind of like a 401K, their money goes into an account that's dedicated to them. And the town, or the Board of Ed, does not have to pay Social Security for those people. So every dollar they make, we're going to save six dollars, I'm sorry, six point two cents. And that adds up to about twenty thousand dollars at least in next year's budget. So we've kept our Social Security account pretty much flat level funded. We're going to provide the requisite level of supplies and equipment. And we're going to try and ensure that all Stafford High School graduates are college and career ready. We have a ninety-five percent graduation rate at Stafford High School. That's pretty impressive. Next year, we have two accreditation processes, one at the high school and one at, uh, West Staffordville, the NIESC, and also the NACI, and also Staffordville School. The last budget priority is a, an initiative to provide in-district special education programs where and when appropriate. As I said, if we look at the issues on page eight, we have some students that have significant needs. Some of those students are outplaced, which means that they have to go to facilities outside of Stafford. If they do, we have to bus them there. We have to pay for the services that they receive there. One of our initiatives is to bring these kids back, not just to save money, but to get them back in their neighborhood schools, to get them back where their friends and family are. So we have put together a plan. It's going to start small. We're going to hopefully bring two, three, or four kids back from these out-of-district facilities, bring them into programs at West Staffordville School and at Stafford Elementary School. It's going to cost us some money for staff, for supplies, but we think that we can at least break even and maybe even save money bringing these kids back. Points of pride, I won't read through all these, but this is the best of Stafford schools. Third-best school district for your buck in Connecticut. Again, read through it. There's a lot to be proud of here. Unified sports, three-year technology plan, distance learning experiences, Google classrooms, and the last but not least, an outstanding team of educators and support staff. Page seven, enrollment. I mentioned earlier, we have about 1,527 students as of September 29th. As of March 1st, we have 1,542. But we also have financial responsibility for 64 other students who go to outplace facilities that I just mentioned, state technical schools like Cheney Tech, Rockville VOAAG. And next year, we have a student going to E.O. Smith VOAAG. And we have students who go to magnet schools. Page eight, I already talked about. Page nine is the budget. Our increase, as I mentioned earlier, is 0.98, less than 1% over this year's budget. It's a dollar amount of $271,736.64. This represents a .35 mil increase to all citizens of Stafford, assuming no increase in revenues from the state or federal government. In terms of totals, the largest amount of an increase you see is in the salary account, 2.2%. That represents all salaries for all of our employees, teachers, secretaries, custodians, maintenance workers, nurses, paraprofessionals, administrators. Our benefit account, even though it's a $4 million account, is only going up $1,000. Some of that is because we're keeping our benefit, our self-insurance fund, flat-funded because we have over $1 million in a surplus in that fund. So we're going to use that surplus and draw that down to offset any cost increases for health insurance for our employees. Professional services are only at $45,000. And that's basically an accounting issue. Remember I talked about, we looked at every single account? Well, we found that sports officials were being paid out of salary accounts. Well, they're not supposed to be. They're supposed to be paid out of professional services because they're typically not our employees. So that's why you see an increase of $45,000 in that one account. Rebears, rentals, other property services were pretty much flat-funded. We reduced a few accounts, but we're going to reduce it by a total of $61,000. I'll get into the detail in the next couple pages. Our biggest increase, other than salaries, is transportation, tuition, and other services. Utilities and supplies, we reduced by $46,000. And we reduced our dues and fees accounts by $4,000. On the bottom of that page, there are a couple items I talked about already. These are revenue sources. Again, some people want to know what you spend. They also want to know what you generate for income. We're going to generate approximately $100,000 in that Medicaid reimbursement. We're currently offering a one-child a pre-K tuition experience in Stafford. That school district pays us $35,000. I'm sorry, that's tuition by the pre-K, the preschool kids, the parents who pay for their kids to go to our preschool. The student I just talked about from Eastford, Eastford pays us $30,000. And our excess cost reimbursement, which I'll get to in a minute, anticipated at $100,000. The next two pages are the detail of the summaries I just went through. What I want to direct your attention to is on page 11. Two accounts, electricity and debt-related expenditures in the 600 series and the 800, dues and fees. I talked earlier about our solar program and our geothermal program. Well, under electricity, you see a $513,000 budget request. We're approximately at that level this year too, but we've only spent $80,000-plus at this point. No matter what we spend, whether it's $80,000, $100,000, $150,000, the balance that's left at the end of the school year always goes back to the town to offset the solar project. So that money is automatically coming back, this year, next year, the year after, the year after. Also, under debt-related expenditures, you see $156,250. That's related to the geothermal project. We're also paying for that out of our budget to offset the costs that the town incurred when that project took place. This year, we tried to present a budget... I tried to present a budget which didn't have a three-ring binder and 350 pages of detail because we didn't think there was a whole lot that was changing. We had contracts that are being negotiated. We have contracts that are in place. We have costs that we know are going to increase for transportation and tuition. We've kept our benefit programs level-funded. So what you see here may disappoint you in terms of detail, but we have enough people here to answer any questions that you might have about any of the details in our programs. And at this point, I'm running out of gas. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Macchio, your new superintendent, who's going to tell you about some of our initiatives. And then we'll answer any question.
I guess the first thing I need to do is take my three-ring binder and sort of hide it under here. Because now that I'm on whopping day number 12, I did need the backup because I'm trying to learn about the budget that Dr. Smolus put together. But let me say, first of all, good evening and thank you very much for coming out this evening. I do want to make sure that I echo the thanks that Dr. Smolus put together regarding all the people that got together and really did a wonderful job and looked deep, deep at this budget. And this goes all the way even until this past Monday, where at the Board of Education meeting, we voted to make further cuts and bring it down to the 0.98. So a lot of time, a lot of effort, and a lot of energy going to get, give you the most fiscally responsible budget that we possibly can. The other thing I'd like to say is, I don't know if he's ever heard this before, but I'm going to call Dr. Smolus a very humble man because the school district that I'm walking into today is very different than the school district that he walked into five months ago. There has been a tremendous amount of, for lack of a better word, we will say healing that has occurred within the school district. That's at the staff level, the student level, the administrative level. I have been received with warm, welcome, open arms and incredibly appreciative. Other than my 4:00 AM phone calls from Mr. Zulik, that's how I started my day number two, it has been wonderful. And Rick, if I don't have to talk to you again at 4:00 AM for a long time, that will be good things. I'm going to take you through page number 12, which are the staffing adjustments. But I hate to say it, but Dr. Smolus sort of stole the thunder, if you will, because you've heard about a number of the different items that he's already gone through. There are positions which are included in this year's particular budget proposal. And what I will tell you is that these are positions that were currently in the budget. This past year, when the budget freeze happened immediately at the beginning of the year, these were positions that were not filled or these are positions that are being brought in to help with some of those initiatives that he's already talked about. The first one is the music teacher at Stafford Elementary School. This was one of those that was approved for this year's budget but was never filled. This is an open vacancy. Basically, what we've done this year is we have had no band for fourth graders and fifth graders. The students that were in fourth grade last year that had band, now they're in fifth grade. The music teacher that is there has taken it upon themselves to make sure that they've continued. If they didn't do that, then that would drastically impact the music program moving forward for future years. So this is us trying to fill that position so that we can have those fourth graders be able to start their band program. The three one-to-one special education paraprofessionals, you saw on page eight the level of need that happens within the district. Those paraprofessionals are necessary for either newly identified students for special education or they're for students that are new to the district. They've been identified through a planning and placement team. There's been a group of individuals that has collected data. This is sort of the next step. You heard Dr. Smolus talk about it is our need to educate all children. And we want to educate all of our Stafford children, as many as possible, here in Stafford. This is a process to help us keep them here in Stafford. The staffing adjustments that are included as part of the middle school and the high school reorganization proposal, again, thanks a lot. Dr. Smolus, who stole the thunder, he talked about the scheduling issue that occurred at the middle school already, which, to be honest, was detrimental to the kids. They weren't getting the best education possible at the middle school. They weren't able to take certain classes. There was a number of positions that were necessary in order for us to get them all of the classes that they needed to be able to take. Rather than us just adding positions into the budget and saying, "We need a plus whatever number." Mr. Plecha, Mr. Buska, the other administrators at the middle school, the high school, you know, the special services director, the curriculum instruction director, everybody got together. And I was sort of entering into the district while all of this was happening. So I was sitting through some meetings. I think the ongoing joke is we're on iteration number 42 of this reorganization. But we were able to cover all of these different staffing needs at the middle school and the high school within the district. So these are being covered either through retirements that are now vacancies. They're being covered through transfers of people that were at the high school, which will now shift down to the middle school, or vice versa, or assignment changes that will occur. The other part of that proposal, which he did not mention, was there is going to be a much stronger alignment of practice between the middle school and the high school. And this specifically is about kids in need before they get to special education services. It's our intervention services. I won't go through all the acronyms because that will bore you. Education, we have plenty of them, and we don't need to talk about them. But those intervention folks, we're looking at some non-certified positions being eliminated. And that's one at the middle school and one at the high school. And all of the students that are going to be receiving those high-need interventions prior to special education will be getting those from certified interventionists. The last piece is the staffing adjustments that are included in what we call the Stafford Learning Center. That's the proposal that Dr. Smolus spoke about regarding the special education services. There will be, and again, this is another one of those items went through multiple iterations as we made sure that A, we were as fiscally responsible as possible, but we met the needs of the kids in the locations where they could be housed. So that's going to be basically a specialized teaching and development for students' social, emotional, and behavioral functioning. Our students are becoming more and more difficult in terms of how quickly they become dysregulated. So how quickly they have a hard time functioning in the academic setting. These programs are designed to be able to keep them within their classrooms. And when they have the needs, when they need the assistance, the people will be present and able to provide it. Part of that program as well is you mentioned the number of students that were responsible for outside of the district. Whether it be two, three, or four, we're looking to bring students back to Stafford. There is significant savings for the town if we can educate them here in town. Each child that we send outside of the district costs the district about, roundabout, it depends, each child's different, about $90,000 between tuition and transportation. Significant savings if we can educate them. This keeps cutting out. Is that me or... So there's significant savings if we can help build programs within the town. This is a first step. We see this as, you know, small baby steps. We want to start small. You want to grow it, have it become stronger and stronger. And then we can look to expand that to other schools in the future. This is a possibility for us to actually have even further cost savings in the future. Very excited about this program. It will also be able to provide right-on-site professional development for the teachers that even if they're not in that program, they can provide the professional development to the other teachers that are in the school and to other schools in the district. Dr. Smolus did say, right now, it is at the minimum cost neutral if there will be cost savings as part of this program. These are the types of things that, again, we dig deep and we look at. We want to try to bring more of these types of programs into the district so we can save you even more money. There were some positions. It's not all rosy. There were some positions that were included in the budget, or that were included in the budget proposal in the past that have not been included in this budget proposal because you can't have everything, right? There was a secretary for the athletic department. You can see the three of them that are listed there. That was part of the 1718 budget that was not filled this year, that is not being included as part of this budget. The maintenance worker district-wide, again, approved for this past year, not filled due to budget freeze, not looking to be included in next year's budget. And the last one, STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. That particular teacher, a half-time teacher that would be at Stafford Elementary, again, approved for this year, not moving forward for next year. At that point, that is all of the staffing adjustments that we have. Again, I will echo the fact that all of the staffing adjustments that were made were looking at being able to handle within the district and not look to add to our full-time equivalency of staff. At that point, that is the end of our formal presentation. And you can try to sit down over there, but you can come back up here and try to answer some questions if you want. We'd be happy to answer any questions. We have, all of the principals are here as well as the directors.
I got to get my steps in anyways.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have several rental properties. And I end up with people, families with children, that they're homeschooling. I have one family right now. It's been in the news lately what's happening to some of these families that are homeschooling. They've got children between the ages of 12 and 2. Those kids are supposedly being homeschooled. They sit in the house all day long, and you only see them occasionally out in the yard. They do not know what to do. They've got no friends. Officer Duncan has been very helpful in connecting me with DCF. Officer Duncan has been very helpful in connecting me with DCF. I've also called Family Services. Family Services says they can't do anything unless the family calls them and asks for their help. I don't know if the school can do anything, but one family, not this one, a different one, the 16-year-old daughter disappeared. And I said, and I asked them, "Well, where did, you know, where is she?" "Oh, we sent her off to England to go to college." "Well, I've lived in England, and you cannot go to college at 16 in England." And I know that, and they said, "Oh, well, she was born in England, she's got an English passport." So DCF said they can't do anything about it with a foreign passport. Is there anything the school can do to get a hold of these children and get them somehow friendships and relationships and anything that, they're being totally ignored, basically, because their parents think they know it better. It's not just the ones that hit the newspaper, it's happening all over in towns. And I don't know what to do about it.
I didn't want to take the microphone until you were done.
I don't know what to do about it.
The short answer to your question, ma'am, is we must allow parents to homeschool their child if they so choose. Our responsibilities, they have to come to our office, the superintendent's office, fill out a form. Once that form is signed, they, we are unable to track them until the end of the school year, when the parents are supposed to come back and tell us what type of education they provided those children. They don't often come back, we don't often see them. People like yourself who are concerned citizens and neighbors, and I applaud what you did contacting Lieutenant Duncan, and you can talk to the state, DCF, but really, our hands are tied. We can't do anything for or with those kids or those parents because they're not involved in our schools. They have chosen on their own, which they're legally able to do, to homeschool their kids.
One more question.
Yes.
You said at the end of the year, they have to commit and see if they, what happens when they don't commit? Do you have any kind of...
I have no mechanism to track them now. They could have moved, for all I know.
Oh, I'll tell you where they are.
I'm sure Lieutenant Duncan knows where some of them might be too. Any other questions? Did I bore you that much?
No.
Oh, that was you, okay. Yes, sir.
I'll take the podium, but more of a comment than a question, but my name is Kirk Packrell, and this is my first town meeting, so this has been educational for me, so hopefully one of many. A couple of, first, a comment. Both of you had mentioned five months ago about a district in crisis and healing that's required. That really concerns me with two children in the school system. And when I hear comments like that, you know, what you're trying to do, so congratulations to you for what you're doing, I'm just very concerned if we turn the clock back two years ago or one year ago, what led us to this point. But that's my comment, and then we'll just leave it from there. One of the comments you brought up is about the solar program and about the $400,000 differentiator from what's actually in the budget for what's being paid back to the town. I assume there's an accounting of that, so there's a requirement of that. I mean, my concern is if we're using more electricity in the school system, is that going to affect the town on a go-forward basis? I mean, how is that accounting? Is there some knowledge about that? $400,000 seems like a lot of money between what's in the budget from what the actual spend is.
Well, there's two parts to that question and two parts to the answer. The first part is, we have to budget the amount because that was the agreement made when the solar project was put together. The reason why, obviously, is to help pay for the cost of the project, but the second reason is to help Stafford abide by state law in terms of a minimum budget requirement or minimum budget expenditure for students. By including that in our budget, we are spending that money for our students, because that's part of maintaining a building, providing power, et cetera, et cetera. The $400,000 I talked about this year is what our anticipated rebate or return to the town will be because of the good experience with the solar project. It could be a little bit more, it could be a little less. Next year, the same thing. It all depends on the type of heating season you have, the type of electricity usage you have, but there are people on this board who know a lot more about this project than I do.
So there's a minimum spend, so...
Yes, we have to spend a minimum per student by state law.
Okay. And then beyond the dollars and cents, one of the things you were talking about, the learning center, which it sounds very good on the surface about bringing the students back into town. My concern is, could these, could this cause a disruption to the existing students that are already in the classroom? It sounds like there was a reason that they were not included in the Stafford school system, bringing them back to the school system, although it might be the right thing to do, but for the existing students that are in those classrooms, could that be a further disruption? So I'm trying to balance the education for our students with the dollars and cents, and I'm not sure, if you can comment about that.
I'm going to let Steve comment, but I first want to reiterate what I said earlier. This is not only a financial issue, this is a family issue, a neighborhood issue. Bring these kids back to where they belong, it's a Stafford. These are Stafford kids, we want them educated in Stafford. But as far as the disruption, I'll let Steve.
It's a very good question, it's a very good concern. When you send a student out, the goal is not to keep them out of the school system for the rest of their career, first and foremost. You're sending them out because at the moment, you're not able to meet their specific needs. When you bring students back, you need to be extremely careful about when you bring them back. You get, in my opinion, in my experience, you have basically one opportunity to try to have a student re-enter the school system from an out-of-district placement. It's a data-driven process, they have to have specific goals and objectives that they've had to meet. The director of pupil services, something about me? The director of pupil services will be attending those planning and placement team meetings at that out-of-district placement. They also, she will also go out and she will observe the child. We will not be bringing back kids that we believe would be a disruptant. We're bringing back only those few individuals, two, three, four. Remember, we have a number of them that are outplaced. You see the size of the line item that you have there for out-of-district placement, right? So we're not looking at, we don't want to bring them all back. We can only bring those back that we feel are going to be successful and that we have observed, that we've collected the data, that we feel as though that we, or I should say, not even feel, that we know we can educate and will not be disruptive in the educational environment. Again, you have to be incredibly careful when you bring these kids back, especially when you're talking about the kindergarten, first-grade level. If you send them out once, and then you try to bring them back and you fail, think about the next 11 years of that child's life, right? It's very difficult to then bring them back again, so you have to take small baby steps and make sure that you're making the most accurate decisions before you decide to bring them back. Excellent question, totally understand where you're coming from.
Yep. And final comments, I sat in on a couple of board meetings, and I just want to congratulate the board and for putting together a budget that looks very responsible, so thank you.
You're welcome. The only other comment I would like to make is in terms of, I want to sort of ease your feelings, and my suggestion would be, now again, I'm on day 12 in the district, and I didn't mean, I know I didn't mean to, I know Dr. Smolos didn't mean to cause you any anxiety regarding sort of the process that this school system has gone through over the last few years. I would welcome you to speak to any of the administrators about the feeling that they have, the collaboration that they have at this point, the collegiality that they have. I would also extremely welcome you to speak to any of the teachers or paraprofessionals regarding the way that the school system is running currently comparative to the way the school system was running even a year ago. Our goal, my goal especially, is about transparency. We've already made some adjustments at the board level so that you can fiscally know we are as transparent as possible. I will do everything I can, I'm a young guy. I plan on being here for as long as you're willing to have me. I got four kids of my own, every decision that I make, I look at my kids. Is this the decision I would want as a parent for my kids if they were coming to the Stafford public schools? So again, this is about transparency, it's about communication, and it's about collaboration. I apologize again for causing that anxiety, by no means that I want to have that happen for anybody here, but I'm incredibly, and I've only, again, 12 days, I'm incredibly proud of the work that this man has done over the course of five months, with all of the work from the Board of Education, from the administrators, from the teachers, from the paraprofessionals, from the parents, everything. There's been a lot of work done before I came here. Thank you.
I have one brief question. I would also like to thank, is there another question?
I just wanted to ask Mr. Maciel, you have four children?
I do.
I know you're new, but do you live in Stafford, or will you soon?
I do not live in Stafford. I live in Feeding Hills, Massachusetts. I drive about 40 minutes to come to work every day. Because I have four kids, because I, I'm a family guy, you know, I'm not, you're an old teary-eyed, I'm a little softy on the inside, doesn't look that way on the outside though. I am a family guy. I moved back to Feeding Hills because that's where I was, I was born and raised in Agawam. My mother lives in Agawam, my in-laws live in Agawam, my brothers live in Agawam. We get together every weekend, we get together all the time. You know, that's where my family is, that's where I want my kids to be around. I don't mind the 40-minute drive, but at the same time, yeah, I'm not going to be uprooting my family to move to Stafford. It has nothing to do with Stafford, it has to do with the fact that my kids know their family, we're incredibly tight Italian family, that we like to eat a lot together, so that's why I won't be looking to move, unfortunately. But I will say, you will see me probably everywhere. My wife has already asked me whether or not she lost her husband to another job. I said, "Well, money is part of my job." I mean, I need to be out there in the community, I need to know the community. That's my job, is to serve the kids in the community.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I have a very large brick house for rent.
I know it's late, I just wanted to make two quick comments. If you like to live dangerously and you enjoy turmoil, go to the General Assembly sometime when the homeschool people are in before the legislators and testifying why the school systems have corrupted their children, make them read the same books over and over again that they've already read before, teach them ideology and so forth. I've never seen a group of more determined, absolutely angry people demanding that they have the right to educate their children the way they want to do it. And I was there when a number of school systems came in and complained that they never come back for these second meetings at the end of the year and so forth, and they got nowhere. Everybody in the General Assembly panel was intimidated and they voted unanimously to support the system as it exists today. The second thing I just wanted to comment on is the remark, remarks made by Mr. Lucia, Chief Lucia of the Staffordville Fire Department. He's absolutely right in that we need to begin to plan for the future, because what we are going to be encountering every year is less and less aid from the federal government, less and less aid from the state governments. It's not justified. I just want to say this, this is my own feeling about it. I am convinced that everybody on the Board of Finance will work as hard as they can to do the best they can for everybody in Stafford, and I have total confidence in all of my colleagues. But I've been following now for eight or nine months, as part of a little side job, the thinking in Hartford and so forth. And even though Connecticut is the richest state in the country per capita, and the richest country in the world, and even though we have 3,000 more millionaires and multimillionaires in Connecticut than we had in 2004, and even though we have 17 billionaires, the same number we had three years ago, two years ago, and last year, there is a growing consensus that the localities are going to have to begin to do things on their own, that there's going to be less and less municipal aid, and there's going to be less and less concern for people at the state level. They want to demonstrate they're cutting taxes at the state level, which they've done, but they don't tell you that they're simply passing on the cost down to people in communities like ours, small communities. The largest incidence of tax collection in Connecticut is property taxes, and that's where the rubber really hits the road. That's where we have to plan for the future. Every one of us is proud of Stafford, every one of us wants to make it the best community can possibly be, and we're working for it all the time. I'm convinced everybody in elected and appointed offices here has done the best they can, and they're willing to listen to suggestions to make changes. But what we have to understand is that the pie's going to get smaller, and more and more of what we do, we're going to have to pay for ourselves. It's not fair, it's not justifiable, it puts the real burden on the person who owns a single-family house, raising a family, you know, the working family people. But that's what's coming. And the most successful towns will be the towns that do what Chief Lucia was suggesting, begin to make long-range plans and think about things for the future. Because, you know, a lot of the aid that we've depended on in the past, that came every year, is not going to be coming anymore.
I also want to thank Sonya Shagov, who is the chairman of the Board of Education. She's been a wonderful person to work with and a big help, and thank you, Chris, too, for all the help the Board of Education has been wonderful, thank you. And I would also like to note, Lieutenant Duncan, would you like to address us with any concerns of Stafford?
I'm good.
I knew I did.
You're a strong silence type, Tom.
Do you have any concerns? I'm still with microphones. She could probably hear me without it anyway, can't you? At this time, we are going to close the public hearing, as there's no other comments, but if there are, by all means, we'd be willing to listen to them. I'd like to say a big thank you to the selectwoman, Ms. Mary Mitter, for all her help, and to Rick Hartenstein, and of course, to Mr. Maciel and Dr. S.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all of your help tonight, thank you for coming. The Board of Finance is not excused.